Okay, in the interest of ending on time, I'm going to begin on time. With that, I'm calling this question and answer listening session to order. Roll call and verification of a quorum, please.
Ms. Evil?
Here.
Ms. Paxton?
Here.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Here.
Mr. Presley?
Here.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Sherrick?
Here.
Ms. Totten?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Okay, I need someone, an approval of the agenda. I'll read it, does everyone have a copy? Okay, you were all given one in your packet, so I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Paxton?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Zero.
Okay, thank you for coming. I have a few things that I wanted to say before we start, but this is your listening session, and we'd really like to hear from you, so I'll be as concise as I can possibly be and get on with it. But a few things I wanted to say. First of all, we're discussing the livelihood of about 1,000 people and their families, and nobody in this room is taking that lightly. While this is the final report of our current contract with Carlson-Datman, please let me be clear that this is a work in progress. The committee, who's a group of employees of this district, has worked long intense hours to get here, but know that there's still a ton to do. Please think of this more as a progress report, a pause in the work than a final report. This year, meaning until the end of April 2015, the board that's sitting before you has many important longstanding decisions to make. For the Stevens Point area school district, it's our desire to get as much public and employee input as possible before making any of those decisions. That said, we'd like to set the tone with this question and answer and listening session. Please abide by the following rules. When you come to either of the lecterns, state your name. Please be ready with your concise, specific question or comment. I'm going to ask that nobody be argumentative. We want to hear what you have to say, and we are listening, but arguing isn't going to get us anywhere, and I will probably stop you. I'd like you to listen to everyone's questions, and please be quiet so everyone can hear all of the questions and answers. Everyone here has a vested interest in this process, and everyone's questions and the subsequent answers are of equal importance. Charlie is going to begin by answering questions that he received through email. Charlie's sitting at the end. After he's done with that, he will say so, and people can line up on either side and start with their questions or comments, or if you want something clarified that he said. Anything he cannot answer tonight, we have two secretaries recording all the questions, plus it's being recorded, recorded. He will compile a list of the questions, email the answers to the board, and we'll figure out how to disperse them to people. Okay? Let's go from there. Charlie?
Thank you. This is a process that is familiar to me as well. I've done this on other occasions. I recall a Christmas holiday a couple of years ago, I sat down and wrote answers to 98 separate questions, and posted them. And I think that's a worthwhile process. A number of the questions go to individual people and circumstances. I'll indicate what the questions are, but in those situations, you can expect that we'll respond as part of a separate consideration of individual circumstances as well. But I wanted to make sure that the questions were out there, because it may cause somebody to ask a similar question involving their circumstances.
Can you hold your mic over here, cutting it down?
Is that better?
Not too bad.
You're welcome. These questions were coming in as late as today, so some of this is going to be flying relatively quickly, but I'll try to do my best. And then, of course, during the public session as well, to the extent I can respond or answer questions, I'll try to do that as well. Starting with no necessary order, I was asked, "When looking at clerical pay, do I assume that no matter what position you hold within the school offices, you will be paid the same wage?" No, that's not a good assumption. The level of the allocation to the pay range would depend upon the evaluation of the job content on the job description questionnaire that was provided for analysis. Second question is, "Will clerical school term employees be in a different pay category than year-round school employees?" I really can't answer that question. Ultimately, the board will need to answer it, but my proposal is, is that the rate of pay would be the same whether you are school year, part-time, or full-time. Sometimes, I would add to that, sometimes I'll have employers that will make distinguishing on pay plan advancement. Now, you've not had pay ranges in terms of steps for support staff positions, and some people will say, "Well, then the rate of progress across the pay plan ought to be different if you're part-time than if you're full-time." I don't subscribe to that belief, and I will recommend against that, but I at least wanted to footnote that. How will new hire starting pay coincide with someone who has been working in a position for years, as someone who has years of experience being compensated fairly versus a new hire? That question was asked in a number of different ways through the material that I received by email. And absolutely, one of the least popular features of implementing a new pay plan in this era, anyway, is putting people on the pay step of the new grade that provides an increase, because it doesn't reflect years of experience. And that's particularly difficult in your situation for support staff, because you've had a unitary rate schedule as opposed to pay ranges. Now, it's, and I'll get to a little different answer on that question, but ultimately, it's going to be the board's decision as to what consideration, if any, to give to years of experience in placing people on a pay plan. My suspicion is it's going to come down to a question of cost. And cost has been a concern in this district, as it is in most across the state, in terms of what you can afford. And I think you'll probably hear, certainly you would hear it from me, it would be nice if we could place people on the pay plan based upon experience, but the question ultimately is going to be, you know, what's the implementation cost going to look like? Will current employees keep their current wage? To repeat myself on what I've said in meetings before, our firm, and we will never, ever deviate from this, will never recommend a reduction in pay. Period. Never have, never will. The worst that'll ever happen to an employee in a pay plan that we do is you'll walk out of the room making the same money you were making when we walked in. Now, that doesn't mean that if people are paid above the maximum of pay range, we will recommend they be redlined, or red circled, or frozen until the pay range catches up. But that's a lot different than having your pay cut. And I've heard it said in conversations, people have given me feedback, that there have been conversations and questions raised here, that, "Oh, my gosh, I'm going to have a 30 percent pay cut." Not based upon anything we've said. And I certainly haven't heard anybody on the board suggest that they would cut anybody's pay either. So, I hope that finally lays that one to rest, but I suspect we need to write it down and publish it so that people will be comfortable. It's certainly, it's in the executive summary of the report as well. What will the top of the pay scale, what will be the top of the pay scale for clerical employees? The pay scales that we've recommended were published with the executive summary. There are maximums on those ranges, and so they're there for viewing. Are there employees who may have already reached that level? Yes, I think there probably are. I don't recall how many off the top of my head, but there are some who have, but they are by far in the minority in terms of everybody covered by the support staff pay plan. There was a question from one of the school psychologists that I'm probably going to need to answer separately, but essentially, it goes to a question that was raised with us early on in our work with the teacher and related group regarding a change that occurred in 2013-14 involving the contract year. And I've just got to dig into that and find out exactly what happened and what response is appropriate, and we'll do that on an individual basis. A question, again, from the support staff, "I did not see the secondary head secretaries listed in the step plan. Are we considered administrative assistants in Grade H?" The answer is, I don't remember. And I will look it up, and I will get you a response. And we will do that promptly. That's the same question. Point of clarification. Next statement and question is, "As I'm looking at your recommended 2014 pay structure for the non-exempt employees of the Stevens Point School District, I would like some clarification before the listening session next week. Are you suggesting that the district start newly hired special ed EAs at 1485?" And the answer is yes. "I've been employed with the district for 20 years, and I'm currently making 1488 per hour. If I understand what you are proposing at the workshop, my new hourly wage would be the next step up at 1527. Are you suggesting that after 20 years in the district, I will be compensated 42 cents more an hour than someone who was just hired off the street yesterday?" And the answer is, that is exactly what the proposal is. That doesn't mean that that's what the board will do. Again, it goes to the question of cost. What I would point out is that the maximum right now, under the current pay plan, you'd make exactly the same as somebody hired off the street, and you would never make more. The current, the pay plan that we've proposed would set a maximum of 1909 per hour and a way to get there. So I guess ultimately, the question becomes whether or not that's a good deal or a bad Next question, "I'm an emotional behavioral teacher," I think that means emotional behavior teacher, not that I'm an emotional behavior teacher, "in the Stevens Point district," although maybe, "and was hired in June of 2011, starting my fourth year at Point, eighth year teaching, 2014-15. I received my master's degree in May of 2013 for educational counseling. I recently received a 5 percent increase for a moderately hard-to-fill position, and it appears that I will be receiving further increases under the proposed compensation plan. Could you verify if I am interpreting the plan correctly? That as teacher in my fourth year for 2014-15, I would receive a 4 percent increase, initial final level, and my master's degree would result in a $7,000 increase in my existing salary?" And the answer is probably yes, but I need to verify it. There's a theme here. "I'm a special education assistant for the Stevens Point area school district. I have been with the district 10-plus years. I currently make 1410 an hour. By looking at your report, I would move to the minimum on the report. Is that right? I have been here for many years, and a new person, or someone that has only been here a shorter time, would make the same. I think something is wrong with that, considering I am trained in my job and have been for many years." I think I've responded to that. "Since we are not including benefits or in negotiations with staff, how do we know if we will be able to sustain these salaries? And when would negotiations take place in the timing of implementing these salary ranges? Thoughts, ideas, and suggestions?" I said in the executive summary and at our last session, when we reported out, that there are absolutely cost implications of the recommendations we're making, and we need to put a fiscal note to this. Sustainability is critical. You've said that as a matter of policy. I understand that as a matter of practice. I'm not familiar, up to date, on what your current fiscal situation is. You know, it's the time of the year when those things are changing, but my suggestion, strong recommendation, is that whatever the board ultimately does, be accompanied with a fiscal note that is not only aimed at a new school year, but is also pitched forward in terms of some sort of ongoing rollout costs over succeeding years. Special ed assistance is a case in point. We have suggested a fairly dramatic increase in pay over the career of those employees, and that is going to be expensive, and I think deserved, but we need to be able to handle the cost, and how are we going to manage those expenses? There are a number of questions here that I received, and it's a fairly lengthy document, but I want to take the time to go through it. "I believe the support staff was a first employee group approach to fill out job duty surveys. In your final report, you stated a sampling from each classification within the group was asked to participate. Actually, every employee was sent to survey and encouraged to complete it, though people with similar jobs can complete as a group. How many support staff employees completed and submitted surveys? The observation is correct. I believe that virtually every employee, although I believe employees who did the same thing, were afforded an opportunity to complete a group survey. I don't recall how many did that." And then, what occurred was, those JDQs, job description questionnaires, were assessed in Human Resources, and then we were provided with the best, what was determined to be the most appropriate example, a representative example, of what duties were encompassed in that job. Now, of course, we will recommend as part of whatever action ultimately the board takes, that employees would have an opportunity to appeal their classification. So if any particular employee feels, "Well, you know, I don't think I belong there. I think I belong somewhere else," there'll be a process in place for those appeals to occur. "Did your firm utilize district job descriptions as one of the tools in assigning the point value to the various positions?" No. "The essential responsibilities portions of many of the job descriptions are very outdated and have not seen any changes for years, in some cases, close to 10 years. Though some job descriptions show fairly recent revision dates, the changes were found under position, purpose, and physical demands." Which is exactly why we didn't use your job descriptions. We used the questionnaires. And I will tell you that 99 percent of the clients we deal with say, "Our job descriptions aren't very good." That's a very common complaint. It's a document that is rarely perfected and kept up to date. It's why we always recommend that our clients start using the job description questionnaires as the best source document, and maintain those and use those instead. "Focus groups were conducted with teachers, administrators, and board members. Based on your recommendations with board approval, the group's purpose was to better understand the concerns and expectations regarding pay matters in the district. As there are over 400 support staff, many who qualify as the working poor, why wasn't there a focus group for the support staff? We are just as concerned about our pay and have just as many expectations as teachers, administrators, and even board members." The answer to that one is simple, I wasn't asked to. "We used a different data gathering process through the job description questionnaires in order to get that level of involvement from staff. It was seen as being a more efficient way to do that. And obviously, there are listening sessions, and we will recommend an appeal process as In point of clarification, the focus groups that we conducted were with the teacher group. They involved some administrators regarding teacher pay, and with the board as it pertained to teacher pay. We did not run focus groups for administrators and administrator pay.
Can I ask a question? I think you might, whoops, sorry. I think you might have skipped the appeal process question.
Pardon me?
Did you answer the appeal process question, the one, the one, the third bullet down?
I'm sorry, I can't.
Did you, sorry.
Second question to the bottom.
Yeah, I don't think you answered.
Oh, I missed it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to make sure everybody was paying attention. Thank you very much. "When can an employee appeal the point value attached to their position? Who do you make this appeal to? Who will determine what the appeal process will be? How soon can the process begin?" That's a very good question, and I didn't mean to miss it at all. Every client ultimately needs to make a decision on what kind of appeal process that you want. Our point factor job evaluation system is proprietary product, and we don't share it with others. And we certainly don't share how we apply that detail in terms of points involving individual positions. Having said that, what we do, and the way we'll recommend an appeal process, assuming the board will support an appeal process, is it would work this way. The appeal process would occur following adoption of a pay plan. The reasons are two. Reason number one is, until there's a pay plan adopted, there's nothing to appeal. Sort of a practical matter. So in other words, we have to have a policy in place, the application of which is appealed. Secondly, if you do appeals before you adopt a pay plan, my experience has been, you rarely adopt a pay plan, because you're always considering more appeals. As I'm sure you can appreciate personally, the definition of pay and the determination of pay is a fairly emotional matter. It's one of those things about which you will rarely get agreement. Hopefully, what you feel is a sense that you were at least treated fairly. So how we get about that business of fairness works this way. Most of my clients will take the position that the board's decision on the structure of the pay plan, the implementation, like that question of, "Do we give credit for experience?" Those types of matters are policy matters that are for the board to decide. And now, in a post-ACT-10 world, only the board can decide it. That's the law, I'm told. I realize that's dramatically different than what we're used to culturally, but that's where we are. The way we typically set up an appeal process is it works this way. An employee looks at their position in a pay plan, and I'm talking here about the support staff, because the teachers are in a different process right now. And we can say more about that in a minute. So if I'm covered by the support staff pay plan, and I see what pay range I'm in, and I question whether that's the right range, then what typically would happen is you would serve notice, particularly to Human Resources typically, and saying, "Look, I'm not sure whether I'm going to appeal or not, but I'm not very happy with where I am. I'd like to have some more information." You would then make an appointment in Human Resources. You would come in, sit down privately, with your job description questionnaire, and our rating instrument, showing you the levels at which your job was rated. I was doing that this afternoon. And you would have an opportunity to reach a conclusion as to whether or not your position was rated appropriately or not. If you conclude that you were not, you would then prepare a formal written appeal stating your rationale and reasons. Now, your reasons could be, "My job has changed substantially during the course of the study, and I need to update my job description questionnaire. Will you take another look at it?" Sure. And I think this is what the outcome should be, in terms of rating levels. Another form of appeal could be, "I just don't agree with how you rated my job, and I think my job is more important on decision-making at this level for these reasons, and here's my job description questionnaire that backs that up." Here's the substantiation. That written appeal would then be presented to your administrator, supervisor, whoever has responsibility for you ultimately, and they would comment on the completeness and accuracy of your appeal. That information would then come to Human Resources, so that the file is perfected, and the appeals would then be presented to us. Typically, I will come back and meet with that administrator to talk about appeals involving employees in that administrator's department. We would then make a recommendation to administration and the board on how to resolve the appeal. I've got a long history doing appeals. I have no problem being wrong. If we've missed something, this is all about getting it right. And so, I happen to like appeal processes. If you go to the private sector, this will not happen. You will not know how your job is rated. You will not have an appeal. So, the transparency here is, I wanted to explain it to you in terms of what you have a reason to expect out of a recommendation from us. I have not discussed the appeal process with the board. I have not discussed the appeal process with administration. I don't know what they'll decide. I can only tell you what our recommendation will be. "Has your firm ever recommended creating subgroups within a job classification where none exist? The quote, 'special education EA title' is a large umbrella that covers employees who work cross-categorically within various special ed programs. How can the same point value be applied to an employee who spends her time working in a classroom setting focusing on academics, and the employee who spends her day physically restraining a student, or who is hit, kicked, and spit on? How about the special ed EA who works with a feeding tube or suctioning out a trach tube? Would it be easier to come up with more detailed subgroups than having the possibility of multiple appeals?" Well, that was a focus group we did have. We discussed the issue, came up fairly early, and we discussed the question of, "Should there be more than one category of special ed EA?" And the conclusion of the group that focused on it was no. Your peers said no. You may agree or disagree with that. You can take it up amongst yourselves. If you substantially disagree with it, I think we need to hear about that. "Within the step pay plan for the support staff, an employee at a minimum must be meeting the job performance expectations before moving up a step. If an employee is excelling in their job performance, can they be moved up two steps?" That's possible, and it's certainly something the board could consider. I have recommended that in other settings. Or, an alternative is, if you're evaluated as being a superior performer, you could get another evaluation in six months instead of waiting a year. You can accelerate the review as opposed to jumping steps. It's another way to get at the same thing. In other words, what you're earning is a right to another review in six months. You can get another raise. "If not, then is it correct to state an employee meeting minimum expectations and one excelling would both move up one step, the same outcome for very different job performances?" Well, I think the response I've given you would be a way to resolve that. It's a very interesting, just as a sidebar, I was having a listening session with a group of support staff in another school district. I probably had a couple hundred people in the room. And somebody asked this question of me from the audience, and said, "You know, I view myself as a superior performer." as a superior performer. Why should I get the same raise at the same time as somebody else who is not a superior performer?" Didn't name names, but clearly it was on the tip of her tongue. And I said, "You know, that's an interesting question. I don't expect to get that question out of a group. But let me ask you a question. If your school district met three standards. One, you had a performance review instrument that you had confidence in. In other words, it clearly measured differences in performance. Two, that your supervisors were adequately trained and consistently administering the instrument." That's always a big issue because, you know, you've got hard graders and tough, and easy graders. And third, that you had a board that was prepared to consistently fund a performance-based pay plan. How many people in this room? Now, this is an Asprey local 60 bargaining unit. I said, "How many people in this room are in favor of performance-based pay?" Seventy percent of the hands in the room went up. I was shocked. The union leadership was shocked. So what I advised is that it would behoove the board, the administration, to explore this in a little more detail in terms of maybe some more focus groups, talking to people about the relationship between pay advancement and performance. Clearly, there's some interest in it. How substantial is that interest? Now, we offered to the board a couple of alternatives in terms of pay plan design. One of the alternatives had pay for performance. And the board instructed us, "No, I don't think we're ready for it," maybe because of the answer to those three questions. "Give us a step system." And that's what we proposed. Now, I have clients that have adopted step systems with the intention to sunset them within three years with a directive to administration to enhance the performance management system and assess whether or not it could be converted to pay for performance. In other words, get it, get the right things done first. So I don't have, as your consultant, I certainly don't have a closed mind on the issue. Lots of jurisdictions across the state at various levels are starting to contemplate pay for performance. I think the jury's out on how well they're going to do, but it certainly is on the table. Shouldn't an evaluation tool be in place before the step pay plan is implemented? Yes. It should be in place. Before it's implemented? No. Because you can implement it by putting people on steps. That gives you a year to get it in place. Clock's ticking. As some supervisors have different interpretations to the same documentation, will there be a process for employees to appeal the performance evaluation as well? When we design performance evaluation tools, we always provide space on the evaluation instrument for the employee to indicate whether or not they disagree with the evaluation and why. And our expectation is those will be rigorously audited. Will supervisors be given training on how to use an evaluation tool that would be used consistently and fairly across the district? If upward movement on a step plan is based upon a supervisor-driven evaluation, wouldn't they need direction on how to fairly assess their employees? Frankly, the most miserable job in the state of Wisconsin today is first-line supervisor. They have not been adequately trained in how to manage employees and to evaluate performance. Needs to happen. I find it difficult to believe that a board of education that would support performance-based pay of some kind involving teachers would not also require that of first-line supervisors involving support staff. It would be inconsistent in the organization to not be uniform. At a past meeting, President Faxin commented, "One of the questions you may be seeing would be relative to the comparison between an elementary and secondary head secretary position. Would your firm recommend any distinctions between the two levels?" It depends upon whether the duties are different. Have you seen such classifications in other districts? If such a distinction would be made between the clerical staff, would it also include educational assistants, custodians, and food service? Again, it depends upon the nature of the duties. An example would be, I have seen for certain, for example, head custodian positions, distinctions made based upon the size of the square footage of the building they're responsible for. A bookkeeper and an elementary office EA have the same point value of 361 assigned to their respective positions. However, an elementary office EA interacts and communicates with students, parents, staff, and the public on a daily basis. They, in conjunction with a secretary, tend to all health room issues, administering daily prescription medication, monitoring diabetics, and administering insulin by injection, helping to manage asthmatics via supervising inhalers or giving nebulizer treatments, tend to all injuries and illness, et cetera. The work environment for an elementary office EA is a very busy main office. They meet and greet parents and the public. While in the health room, they are exposed to blood, urine, vomit, and feces. They assist the secretary and principal to keep the school running smoothly. So how does this position earn the same points as a bookkeeper? Obviously, the work environment, problem-solving, decision-making, thinking challenges, communication, interaction requirements are not close to being the same. The ranking difference between a head secretary and a special ed EA bring up the same issue. Why is an EA ranked so much higher? It is absolutely amazing to me how people who don't do this work become experts in what they don't do. Again, this is a very emotional process that people go through in evaluating their work. The bookkeeper might have a slightly different view. Again, it comes down to a question of what the job content is and what's the nature of the decision-making, problem-solving, interaction, educational requirements, and working conditions. This is probably a person who would want to file an appeal, once they've had an opportunity to review the evaluation levels and decide whether or not their situation was evaluated It would be inappropriate to base your appeal on what the bookkeeper makes.
I looked over the next two pages, Charlie, and they seem to be more information. There were two questions that appeared on the, it would be the very back last page under the two and three. Those are questions. Everything else is more of a comment.
Ah. This is a letter from Asprey Council 40?
Yes.
Second, the second one is, "What is the logic in using an external comms waiting process that uses 75% private sector and only 25% public sector comps? Is there an explanation for this?" Yes, absolutely. Our experience, and we don't just do this in a vacuum, we go to human resource departments and we ask the question. When you have a vacancy, where do people come from? Do you hire them out of the public sector? Do you hire them out of the private sector? And for jobs at the non-exempt level, for most jobs, not all, but for most jobs at the non-exempt level, most people have told us historically, three out of four applicants come out of the private sector, not the public sector. If I hire a custodian, the person's more likely to come out of the private sector. If I hire a secretary, the person's more likely to come out of the private sector. Educational assistant, et cetera. As opposed to moving around between public sector employers. That's why we use that mix, because we believe, we find from experience that it accurately reflects. And I've literally had clients go back and check their records to see when they posted a job, and they screened the applicants down to those people who they were willing to interview, who met the qualifications, what does the mix look like? Now, I'm not saying it's always three to one, but that tends to be the general trend. So that's why we wait the data, 75% private, 25% public. Now, we don't do that in a vacuum. We had that conversation with the board early on in the study and said, "This is what our recommendation is," and the board concurred. That's a policy decision. It is our recommendation. I've had other situations where clients have said, "No, let's wait at 50/50." It is rare anymore where a client will say, "Let's just compare ourselves to the public Because we only compared ourselves to the public sector historically is one of the reasons, certainly not the only one, why we got Act 10.
Okay, let's move to the next question, please.
Did the positions from comparable employers in the study also provide current employee job descriptions? If those positions and the comps are not doing the same work, those comps are not accurate. They did not provide job descriptions, but the way we go about our survey work is as follows. We ran a custom survey for you. The first thing we do is identify the organizations we want to complete the survey. We then ask those organizations, we send them a questionnaire that has a summary of the job responsibilities of the jobs we're surveying, and we say, "Do you have somebody like this?" They then respond, and we only then ask them for information on jobs that they have matched to our request. It is not a perfect method, but it is a better method than simply sending out a survey with a job title, that we do not do. When we do matches into published surveys, all those published surveys will have a description of the basic responsibilities of the job sufficient for us to say, "Yes, we think that's a match." Those are the only questions that I have.
Yep, those are the questions on there. If you have questions, you can come up to either lectern, and like I asked before, comments are also fine. Please keep them concise and as specific as possible. Charlie will answer whatever he can. In the event that he has to answer something that only the board can answer it, we have it set up so that we're not going to answer it tonight, but we'll respond in an email. And like I said, two people are taking notes. So come on up. Oh, and please state your name.
Hi, I'm Jaclyn Thompson, and I work for the Transportation Department. And at the last meeting, Charlie had stated that Transportation had already negotiated a pay rate. And what concerns me is that our wages are totally based on our hours and our assignment, route assignments, and we need some kind of pay plan in force that also regulates what hours we will get. And the problem occurring right now is that seniority means nothing, and we're losing our hours rapidly, and we want to make sure that something like that is taken into consideration for us in the upcoming year.
Let me respond as follows. First of all, in the original study of support staff, I'd have to go back and look, but my recollection is, is that bus drivers were not covered in the study. However, however, the board did ask at the last meeting that we would gather some information on the pay of both bus drivers and security persons in the, in the school district. I've got that about three quarters done. It's, it's complicated. We've contacted all the districts in the area. The, and I have an analyst in the firm who's done this for a very long time. And the difficulty is, is that most of the districts, as I understand it, contract for their transportation as opposed to employing people, drivers. That doesn't mean that's what you do, obviously. I certainly can work with you to develop some sort of pay plan. I want to get the rest of that data in and then get some direction from the board and administration on what assistance you might want.
Okay, we've been given a statement that our supervisor plans to, you know, have his criteria where he's going to assign routes to us based on our experience and how well we drive a route and how well we handle the students and all this and that. But the bottom line was whether or not we get along with him. And my la- my last summer, I was the most senior person available for subbing on routes, and I was called in once. The guy had never even met me, and I have a perfect record. I've driven for 21 years, and I just don't understand where his criteria fell in. So it concerns me.
Yeah, I hear your concern. I did not regard that as a question. It seemed to be a statement, but noted.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Leon Zick, S309 Highway E. A couple of questions. One is, the Stevens Point District services most of Portage County. Why wouldn't you use Portage County's medium wage instead of Stevens Point?
That's, one, one answer would be, we wanted to get apples to apples in terms of ability. So in response to our conversation last time, I've asked our analyst to pull together information on equalized value per student as, as a measure to assess relative ability to pay. And that equalized value for school districts is available, as is student population, and that might give us a better marker. And your, your comment is well taken, and because school districts do vary in turn, this is a very large school district, and school districts do vary by, by size. But I would think, I think most people would agree, I would hope most people would agree that equalized value per student would be some reasonable measure of affordability and ability to pay.
And then I'm thinking that you might have got this question, but maybe not. In your first presentation, you stated that blue collar workers don't travel more than 50 miles out of their radius, but then you use Annago, Rhinelander, Shannell, Merrill for your comparable. And then in your last meeting, you stated that the cabinet directed you to do that, but why wouldn't you have told them that wouldn't be a fair comparable then? If blue collar workers don't travel 50 miles out of their area?
I think the, and I can't speak for the cabinet, but, you know, and this is going back a bit, but, in time, but I think what, what the district wanted from us is both a measure of, of a sense of equity with, what they viewed as comparable districts as well as a local phenomenon. Now, I can go back and parse that data, you know, for only those districts that are a 50-mile radius to see if there's a difference in outcome. I, I don't know whether there would be or not, but, you know, that's, that's a fair question.
Yeah, because, one more question, quick. This is a hypothetical. If you had a turnover ratio of 60% in a employee group, and you were the employer, or you would recommend to the employer, what would your recommendation be?
Well, I, I think my question for the employer would be, first of all, why do you have a 60% turnover rate? I mean, you know, do, and then the second question is, is that what you want? You know, I, I think it's fair to say most employers wouldn't want a 60% turnover rate. I mean, that, yeah. But, but in an atmosphere where, a situation where a lot of the jobs in the support staff group are not full-time jobs. And so in many cases, my assumption would be that, that employees are taking positions until a better deal comes along somewhere else. And if they can't improve their situation where they are, maybe they need more hours. You know, they're, maybe they're underemployed in terms of what they do, and they're doing something for a period of time. It really goes to the question of what's causing And if they can't improve their situation where they are, maybe they need more hours, you know, they're, maybe they're underemployed in terms of what they do, and they're doing something for a period of time. It really goes to the question of what's causing the turnover. And I've been in environments where we had very high turnover rates, and some of it was due to labor market shortages, some of it was due to scheduling problems. It really gets down, I mean, you gotta, you gotta find out why people are leaving. I mean, that's the main question. And, and, you know, I was just finishing, working on another staff assignment, and virtually a third of the group turned over the last year. And, and going back and assessing it, it was primarily due to the fact that these were positions that were four or five hours a day for the duration of the school year, and they didn't provide enough income that the person needed, you know, in order to meet their needs. And so they did it until they could find a better deal.
If they were full-time employees?
If they were full-time employees?
What would your recommendation be?
I'd want to really know what happened and why.
One other thing, then, when you take out Merrill, and if you do, you would use districts that are comparable to our size? Is that what you said? Like, we're, give or take 7,000 students, so like, these services, like, 6,000, you would use districts comparable to the same size? Is that what you're?
A general standard in the survey business, and part of this is a reflection of federal law under the Sherman Antitrust Act, which doesn't affect public employers, but professionally, most surveyors will tell you they don't want to look at a sample that's fewer than five. And the reason, the reason is, as a set-along group, I think the more valid question would be public employers within a 50-mile radius as opposed to school districts within a 50-mile radius, which would take in the cities, the county, the university. I mean, there's, there's this big outfit on the other end of town that employs an awful lot of people that are similar to people who work here.
Do they deal with adults mostly, the university?
It depends upon your definition of a college student.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Erin Plisca. I was asked here by other teachers at SPAS to schedule a meeting and inform you the reasons why I'm choosing to leave SPAS. Since the majority of the reasons are to do with compensation, I was wondering if that would be okay to say those reasons no.
Yes.
Can you talk into the mic more, please?
Sorry, I was asked by other teachers at SPAS to come and tell the reasons why I'm choosing to leave SPAS. Since the majority of the reasons are to do with compensation, I was wondering if that would be okay for me to address that no.
Yes.
My biggest reason is that I've been loyal to the district for five years, during which I've had no pay raise, yet the district continues to increase my payload. It is frustrating to see newly hired employees with no experience making more than current dedicated and more qualified employees. Equally distressing is the fact that teachers are fighting for a half a percent raise from four years ago while other groups within the school district have gotten raises. Administrators having gotten the highest percentages, 4% in 2012, 13, and 8.77% since 2009. Some of these raises amounting to almost a quarter of my salary. It is one thing to be locked in at the top of the pay scale and another to be at the bottom of the totem pole with family to rates. I know that there have been talks of salary adjustments, but I have no idea what those are or even when those would be implemented, and I cannot wait another five years. So when the small school of Rochelle with only 500-plus people could offer me a $6,600 pay raise, I could not pass it up. Another reason is that I feel the district is not an equal opportunity employer. The district has teachers already receiving a master's degree locked in a master's salary, and new hires with a master's being offered a master's salary. But yet, current employees who do not have their masters but yet would like to, do not have their salaries increased even if they obtain a master's degree. This is not fair. I was told by Jenna Bidwell and Keith Williams that the only option for current employees was a six-credit reimbursement per year pending approval with no possibility of an increase in wages upon completion of a master's. Further, the district has not, would not fully reimburse employees who completed their masters in a typical two-year timeframe, which is required at some schools. I do not feel that it is fair for dedicated employees to be discriminated against because we would like to continue our education and better ourselves for the sake of the district. I made inquiries about this situation last year to the school board. I stated my reasons why I felt this matter should be addressed, but only received a few responses essentially saying, no, it would not even be addressed. So basically, I was stuck. I cannot get a pay raise for years of experience because we all have our pays frozen, and I cannot go back to get my masters even though others are paid for it. Basically, there is no way for me to progress financially, yet the costs of living insurance are steadily increasing. Another reason is that I felt there was a disproportionate workload due to the approval of a semester-long maternity leave of one teacher and two new hires in general chemistry for which I teach. This placed additional time and responsibility on me due to preparing, setting up, and disposing of the majority of the chemicals, and training the new teachers, of which there was no way to be fairly compensated. I remember in my interview at SPAS saying that this would be my dream job. I wish I could say that this was true. I hope you honestly consider what I have said for the sake of preventing more great teachers from leaving. I am truly concerned that without fair compensation for dedicated qualified teachers, that SPAS will become a revolving door for new teachers. Should these matters be addressed and Stevens Point become the district it once was, and I know it can be, I would love the opportunity of once again returning to my dream job. Thank you.
Erin, would you mind, I know you had that in writing, would you mind submitting that so we can examine your thoughts more closely? Thank you. You can send it directly to me. Go ahead.
Kathy Stidinski. Kathy Stidinski is my name. I'm a special education assistant, and the educational assist-
Can you speak up?
The educational assistance group and the food service group, I'm sure you're aware, are under, as far as our health insurance is concerned, we pay 40% for our insurance while all of the groups pay, I believe it's 12%. This seems like discrimination to me. And when you take that fact into consideration, and also our job responsibilities and the pay that we make, it's significantly, you know, I barely bring home paycheck. Is there any, can you comment on that, or can you tell us if there's any?
Did everybody hear the question?
No.
Can I take a shot at it and see if I got it? The concern of the special ed assistants and the food service staff is-
All educational assistance.
Pardon me?
All educational assistance.
All educational assistance, thank you. And the food supports, food service staff, is that the amount that they pay for health insurance, which is 40% a premium, is substantially different than what other employees pay, which is 12% a premium?
I believe it's 12%.
Okay. And is there anything that could be done about that?
And in light of what our salary is, that's such a big chunk out of our paycheck.
And in light of what their salary is, it's even a bigger bite out of the paycheck. It's really not a question, honestly, it's not a question for me. That's a matter that, a policy that the board has set. I would assume you're bringing that to the board's attention.
Yes, that seems like that would be a discriminatory, discriminatory policy to me.
Well, it-
Because it isn't based on a degree, it's, there are other groups that are hired with a high school education, and some of the EAs also have a college education, but, who, I don't know how to, I guess I don't-
Well, I think, I think, let's do this. We've got your comment noted. I think at least it's, we should respond to your inquiry with at least a rationale. Okay? Doesn't mean necessarily you like the answer, but it ought to be responded to.
Yeah, I would like to know what the reasoning is for that, I guess. And then my other question was, I'm really not sure how the step system works. Is it on a merit system? Is it, how do we move up in the scale? What's the criteria?
The recommendation to the board is that progression be, on an annual basis, provided your performance at least meets expectations. It's not superstar. It's that there are expectations of the position, that you'll be evaluated by your supervisor, and as long as you're meeting those expectations, you'll progress on the pay plan.
So as each year of your experience?
That's correct.
Okay.
So it's an annual review, an annual advancement. Yes.
Is that loud enough for you? EA here at Ben Franklin. I've been in the district for 30 years, and my question is along with Kathy's. When you were talking about our pay, did you include the costs that we have in our insurance? And did you do that with any other group? When you're talking what our pay raises or scale should be, that it, did that include benefits?
No.
So there were no benefits involved in this at all? So as a 30-year employee, my 40% coming out of my wages, and the fact that I don't get retirement, other than the state retirement, and after 180 days, I'm done. So from June 6th or 9th until we start school again, I have no income. Are we afforded the possibility of unemployment?
That question would be for the board, not for me. I don't know the answer to that, whether you're eligible for unemployment, I just don't know. But the answer to your base question is, were benefits considered in determining base pay recommendations? The answer is no.
Okay, thank you very much.
Matt Chakowsky, technology and engineering teacher here at Ben Franklin Junior High. Mr. Carlson, I have two questions for you. The first one involves your levels of educators, as they directly will affect me. You have a level one as an initial educator, and I look here, it says existing qualified staff in their second to fourth year of employment, with the school district will be allocated to this level based upon their employment date. I come to the school district with eight years of experience. When I was hired into the district, I was given through contract, through hiring process, four years of experience. I am licensed by the state of Wisconsin as a professional educator, not an initial educator. Would I fall under level one or level two?
I would assume that, absent the evaluation, probably level one, but I don't know. I don't know.
Even though I'm licensed as a professional educator, not as an initial educator? Because there's some confusion-
Yeah, I, no, I understand, I understand your question. Do this for me. Write the facts of your situation down and send them to me, and let us get you an answer.
Okay, thank you. Second question. I just heard you talk to the Ask Me Group about how you went out and looked at non-teacher employees. You looked at 75% private sector, 25% public sector. What was your percentage of private sector you looked at when you looked at educators?
Did not. Only public.
I think it would be wise of us to look out there, what the private sector makes with the same licensing or the same education, same certificate. I teach technology and engineering, I hold mini certificates out there. A lot of the other educators in here can go to the private sector. The reason we don't is because we care about kids.
The comparison is fraught with difficulty. I've had this conversation for probably 40 years about how do we make appropriate comparisons between you folks who are educators as opposed to folks who are not educators? And we are eternally caught in the argument of working nine months versus 12, and it is a miserable experience. And so I think what we tend to be able to agree upon anyway is a couple of things. One is that for most educator positions, the appropriate comparison is probably within And I don't think we want to compare you to what's going on in the non-public schools as a comparison, because that would not favor you well. In certain jobs, certain teaching jobs, there are sciences, technology, et cetera, there absolutely are competing situations in the private sector, and I believe that's why the district decided to designate certain positions as hard to fill. We can agree or disagree as to whether the right ones were named, but it would seem to me that that's probably a situation that is going to continue in our economy. There will be certain positions that simply are going to be harder to fill than others because of competition with the private sector.
Thank you.
Art Greco, business teacher in the Stevens Point School District. In filling out the JDQ, we had duties. Obviously, you put a, well, shall we say, a rating to those? And then what I, why I'm preempting it with this is leading up to my question of what those duties then, how they're weighted, which is proprietary, and it cannot be disclosed. That I want to connect to this appeals process to all the employees, in the fact that if a school board is to remain fiscally responsible, what criterias are set forth, or who puts this appeals process together? If you're going to have to remain fiscally responsible, how are you going to validate the appeals process when it's subjective in manner?
I don't mean to answer your question with a question, but I will. Why do you believe it's subjective?
Well, I guess then that's my question. What makes it not subjective?
A couple of things. First of all, the analysis is grounded on the information that employees provided to us. So in other words, a test of reliability is whether or not the instrument actually measures what it's intended to measure. And because employees filled out their questionnaires, it's verifiable. Now, the verification process that we go through is asking that, requiring that every employee's questionnaire be reviewed and commented on by a supervisor. Now, quite often, that comment is to sign off on and say, yeah, it's accurate. Occasionally, or frequently, a supervisor will say, employee forgot to put down something that was material and important. That's usually the problem we have. So in that sense, the information, the base information, the observation is objective in the sense that the employee is recording it and a supervisor is reviewing it. We would like to think it's accurate and complete. And that's one of the reasons we provide an appeal process, is so if it isn't accurate and complete, the record can be perfected.
What is the criteria for accurate and complete?
Well, obviously, it's, it's a review process internally with both the employee and the supervisor agreeing. Now, the questionnaire is structured in such a way, we ask specific questions that are intended to draw out a complete answer. We just don't say, tell us about your job. I mean, there, it's a highly structured questionnaire in terms of sections. Each section of the questionnaire is related directly to the factors in the job evaluation instrument that we use. The job evaluation instrument has been applied literally in thousands of applications.
Okay, so we have a job evaluates, an evaluation instrument, and then we have fiscal responsibilities. So we have an appeals process, and it finds that you are inappropriately scheduled, and there are no monies to move you up. So where's the validity? What do we do at that point?
Well, that's, that's a financial issue.
Yes, it is.
Not a question of what are the instruments accurate?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So go on to- Let's go on to the second question.
Well, and I want to add as well, in terms of, because this is a good question you ask, in terms of objectivity.
That's why I asked it.
We don't, we, as consultants, we don't have any role in this, other than to try to get it right. You know, I have, I'm not related to anybody here, I don't think. And so it's not a question of favoritism, or we just don't have any stake in this, other than trying to be as accurate as we possibly can. Now, in order to be good at what we do, we do a lot of it. And so the consultants who are evaluating jobs, and in this case, it was me, have got a lot of experience evaluating work. And so it's a learned eye that is going on the information, using an instrument that we have total confidence in, because we know it produces a reliable and valid result. I've got about a two-page document on reliability and validity I'd be happy to share with you. But it's the standards to which we hold our consultants in terms of our work. But we're human. The questionnaires, so are you. The questionnaire could be an error. We could make a mistake. We could miss something. And that's why I happen to like appeal processes, because it gives us one more opportunity to perfect the result. Now, I'm not going to recommend that the board adopt an appeal process that is not prepared to fund. I mean, I would say to the board, if you're not willing to pony up the money for any mistakes to fix them, don't have an appeal process. Don't go through the charade.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, you were talking about an evaluation tool, and a combination of supervisors and others, and you had made a statement, we, at the end of the discussion, it was about being consistent, because there can be differences of opinions and perceptions. And you stated that it is your expectation, your recommendation to the board, that it be rigorous, rigorously audited. And my question is, by whom, and who sets what criteria?
The expectation that we have is that that is the responsibility of the Human Resources Department, to assure the accuracy of the performance evaluation process, through rigorous review of the quality. Now, the nice thing about it is that having been in the software business for a long time, there are now wonderful software products that make this a much easier process to manage. And the days of sitting down and doing this laboriously, fortunately, are over. There is a much more efficient way to do it, and I'd be happy to show the district how that works.
Thank you. And last, if I may have a comment, you pointed out something that was very important to me. Consultants are hired for data and an opinion, a professional opinion, of which you pointed out, and have stressed numerous times, that you've been in this business a long time in referencing your experience. And I think all these employees that are pointing out their experience as weight in wage is an important factor.
I agree. And I don't disagree with your point of view, nor did I disagree with the issues they were raising. I'm just so aware, in part because of all the difficulties that we've gone through, particularly since 2008, and in some cases before. I don't want the district to have to make choices between raises and jobs. If the pot's only so big, and that's always the question, how big is the pot? Then the question is, how do you distribute it? And if the outcome to spending more money in order to build longevity into a better pay plan adoption, if the outcome is somebody loses their job, or benefits, or something, because that's where the savings has to be, I don't think that's a particularly good idea.
I agree. It was just a statement to bring up thought. And the last comment I'll have about that is, as 22 years in education, I have experience that lets me craft a lesson a lot faster than a young teacher. Not saying they're not qualified. The other issue with that is this. When there's things going on in my classroom, my experience, my longevity offers me the knowledge and how to handle it quickly and effectively to keep the learning environment safe, successful, and in a positive note. It's not any, shall I say, bash or negative comment against you. It is a point that I really am trying to make. I know we're facing a lot of tough decisions financially, but I think things need to be looked at sometimes in a little bit of different light. Yes, it is cheaper to hire a new teacher, but I think what's happening, if we do become a revolving door, the loss of experience is going to have an extensive, long-term effect on education. Thank you very much for allowing me to address everybody.
Kial Hens from Spash. I've worked in the district for 27 years, and I just want some clarification.
You know what, I'm sorry. Can I ask you to move to the other mic? I'm not sure why that one's so sketchy.
The mic's not working very well.
Yeah, it's not you. It's the mic. Can we, I have everybody line up at this one from now on, please. We can avoid this. Thank you.
I would like some clarification on the pay schedule. How do you get from the, from say, step two, all the way to step 11?
Annual review.
Okay, so does everybody start at step, you know, what step do you start at?
Gotcha. The recommendation is that in implementing this, because we have employees, depending upon your job, sort of scattered across these particular ranges, and that we've recommended that for purposes of implementation, you'd go to the step of the plan that provides an increase.
Okay.
So as an example, if I look at grade G, step five is $16.55. Step six is $16.97. If you were making $16.75, you would go to $16.97.
So you're saying, with 27 years of experience in the school district, I would start at step three?
Exactly. As opposed to where you are now, which is no increase whatsoever. It's a unitary rate right now. There's no progression.
Okay. And I would like to agree with Mr. Greco. 27 years ago, I started, I experienced with children, and where I am now, experience means a lot.
Hi, I'm Judy Pirat from the Transportation Department. There needs to be a wage study done for the Transportation Department. We lost our longevity, our safety bonus pay, and now our seniority. A fair way of bidding routes and other job duties needs to be reestablished. Also, we are requesting the, the Transportation Department is requesting you to put us on the agenda to cover all the major issues and concerns at our Transportation Department as soon as possible. Thank you.
Angel, are we addressing the transportation on an agenda sometime soon?
Yes, I'm requesting that we put on the agenda as soon as possible.
I have it written down.
Okay, the president wrote it down, so she'll be looking at that. Thank you.
My name is Mark Attack. I have two children, one child in the district. Thank you to all the teachers. You did such a wonderful job over the last 13 years, and I hope you can keep doing a great job, at least for the next four. I'm sure there'll be more than that. I'm here as a bit of a numbers person, looking back, and particularly to the report. There's one number in there that I have seen come up over and over again in the board meetings, in comments. So it's never responded to. So maybe the board or the consultant can address this. And it came up in the board meetings continually, talking about something called post-retirement benefit, which for a rule is basically the money, as I understand it, that the district supports historically as a deferred wage, which allows people to retire before 65, typically 57, 58, and they pay that money out over time. The number that recurrently was brought up by a board member was $52 million in post-retirement benefit. And if we do nothing as a board, was the statement made, that that will be gone in a period of time. That is probably true. In the report as given here, and it is a complex report, I was on the board about 10 years ago. I served on the board for three years. I was never involved in any substantial administration or teacher contract, because at that point in time, there was a four-year agreement and an eight-year agreement. And that becomes a little bit important as we look at this report. In this report, it talks about $2.5 million a year in post-retirement benefit as some reason for the fiscal problems of the district. My issue with that, and I have had this discussion into a number of people over at least a couple of years, is it appears that the district or the consultant at the time is only recounting for one side of the ledger. And I will give an example here in terms of science, because particularly for me, when I hear of a physics teacher, or a chemistry teacher, or really any teacher walking out the door, when there's chemicals involved, after watching Walter White, I get a little bit worried for my child, or my child's cohort, ability to work in this world where chemicals are part of the tactile experience. So I'll use the example of a physics teacher. Perhaps they were at the top of their salary and benefit historically, based on the four-year contract, that's about $72,000 a year with the extra 60 hours. When they retired, if they retired at 57, the district continued to pay an amount of money over the next seven or eight years. The teacher that came in behind them was even with, brought forward with a master's and some other credit, was probably making in the order of 40-something. That is not shown on the ledger. The rhetorical theme I've had in the district, in discussions, behind the table, if you would, would be the rhetoric has to match the reality. And when we use the post-retirement benefit with only one side of the ledger as this terrible cause, when effectively, it was a deferred, historically, it was a deferred benefit. Again, it was taken away. I add two more things that were not included in this, because it's important that that level of the document is made correct. One is this. There is still approximately $800,000 due to administrators in a grandfathered agreement, that should they stay around, and I hope they do, to the point where they hit their retirement age. I think it's 55 in the agreement. It's a grandfathered letter. It's not part of the six-year agreement, or the eight-year agreement, but it's a grandfathered letter, that I was in the room when it was agreed to by the board. We have a million dollars due out to them, and I am not debating that they are due that. I am not debating that. However, it is not showing up in any of the rhetoric. And it comes to the fact where, over the eight-year period, and I don't think anyone necessarily anticipated what was going to happen, the last four years of that eight-year period, the administrators continued to get a 4% or a 3%, I think, on package raise, which set that bar off. And so I end with this, as I started at Jackson School 10 years ago, with a little swahili. Because that does form the construct for my perception of what's going on over the last 10 years. Where we used to work, there was a party called the CCM Party. It's still around. The Kiswahili is Chakuachakomapema. And in my work group, which was 12 people driving in a truck an hour each way, we had a lot of good conversation between all the groups. And we started talking about Chakuachakomapema, get yours early. I'm not saying that was anticipated by the administrators, but as you hear teachers talk about administrators getting 4% of $100,000, when entry-level teachers are locked, and that is changed in this report. I must say, being honest, when I look at the first five years of this, it essentially puts back what was in there prior. I think most of the teachers realize when you came on the, when I was on the board, the agreement that was signed about 10 years ago, teachers who were making due diligence of getting all that extra training, they rose at 11% a year. 3% on the contract, 4% up the step, and 4% over. And I've checked those numbers. So when you look at what's given here, albeit the cost of living is not added in there, it does restore, by my recollection, 3, 3.5, 4, and then 10, with the caveat, there are controls by administrators on whether you advance in that. So it asks the board, as you look at this report, to at least make due diligence that $2.5 million is not used as a boogeyman, because the rhetoric does not match the reality. Thank you.
I'd like to have just two seconds to respond to that in terms, because there was mention in the report of the deferred insurance benefit. My sole reason, my sole reason is, was not intended to make that the boogeyman. The sole message in bringing it up was an admonition to the board. That's a pretty strong word, but it was a caution to the board to not agree to things that you don't fund. And that's why I suggested there be a very careful fiscal note, a forward-pitched fiscal note regarding sustainability. Because, look, I'm an old labor negotiator, and a labor negotiator. And those types of deferred benefits, I believe, were outside the QEO. And they were agreed to in good faith with the unions you were negotiating with. And so the comment is not aimed at the teacher. The comment is aimed at the board, not necessarily this board. But the caution is, don't make a promise you can't pay for, because it affects the next generation. And I find this, I have to do this wherever I go in doing studies, because the tendency is to think about what fixes the problem today and creates a bigger problem tomorrow. It's not intended to be a criticism of the benefit that was created. Not at all. I understand the benefit. It's a cautionary tale, and that's why it was mentioned in the report. Sorry, thank you.
Glenn Reindl. On behalf of the SBA, 18 questions were sent to all the board members last night to take a look at offering specific questions towards, a lot of unanswered questions about the packet and the studies. And I just wanted to clarify a few. Is it my understanding, Mr. Carlson, we talked about competitive, the term competitive pay salaries, you were referring to the closeness and numeric value to other districts? When you said competitive, say, competitive for administrators, competitive for teachers, competitive for others, it's the closest number without any sort of benefit package?
Yes.
Okay. There was no, would you argue, for example, if we look at the schools that you used as comparables, it's my understanding, every one of the it's my understanding every one of those schools has received at least two pay raises in the past four years. Some of them have received four pay raises. Would that factor into what you might consider a competitive issue?
The analysis of compensation was based upon a analysis of the DPI database at a fixed point in time, not how they arrived there historically.
So they're dated numbers that may or may not have changed. I'm just, I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm just saying those numbers are old and they don't have anything to do with, let's say, workplace, work conditions, lack of benefits, or excessive benefits?
You're correct.
Okay. When we talk about the competitiveness or the competitiveness in looking forward district-wide, there was a matrix, and I don't know if the matrix is available to the entire public that the committee is using. Is that available to everyone? The matrix, the possible salary matrix?
Is it in the board packet? Then it's online if it's in the board packet.
Okay, it's not on this packet. The matrix where you had hard-to-find, moderate-to-find, and basic? The overlay that was placed upon a matrix that apparently the district had been using for human resources pay?
I guess the best way to respond to that is that if you would give us a copy of the document you're referring to, I can, we can tell you whether or not it has been circulated.
Oh, I just have it online. I mean, I looked for it other places, and it was just sent to me as a courtesy, saying, hey, take a look at this, other people sent the courtesy. So I guess I'm just concerned, it's, my understanding was there is a salary schedule that's there that was used by human resources and that the committee was told to use this as a starting point. And all of the work that's come from possibly changing it is put upon this template to which the committee had no choice. It's just, here, use this, start from here. And my concern is, was that a good starting point? Is there a reason why that chart is better than any other chart? And it gets to my question, do you expect that chart or a new chart to come forward? What I'm talking about, for everybody understands, is the salary schedule, which would show Step and Lane, or whatever you want to call it today, a progression. Could you foresee them choosing something different than what was given to them? I'm talking about the committee.
I've learned a long time ago to not assume that we're talking about the same document. And so in order to be accurate, the best thing to do, please, would be to send us a copy, or the board, me, whatever, a copy of the document that you're referring to with your question, and then we'll prepare a response. Because other than that, I mean, the committee that we worked with, the working group, the ad hoc working group, included a, I would regard it as a very responsible group of teachers and administrators who I think it's fair to say did not regard themselves as constrained by anything. And, and it was, you know, I regarded it as a pretty freewheeling discussion of what a reasonable approach would be to moving forward, regardless of what the starting point was. But in fairness to your question, if you'll give us the document you're referring to, I can tell you exactly where it figured in the conversation, at least from our point of view.
Okay. And I think most people do hold, those people who are working on it in high regard, and we've said as much publicly. I guess just the issue is, the expectation is, if they would go back to the starting board, you're not, how do I explain this? The big concern is, the board can give any person in the district any dollar amount raised at any time if they're not dealing with what I would call a failure to bargain with another group. Who's failure? Doesn't matter. Is that correct? They can give money to anybody outside of a union at any time?
I think the answer is legally, yes, although I'm not an attorney, so I'm going to qualify that. But the attorneys I have talked to seem to agree on that point now. But I have never heard anybody suggest that that's what this district wants to do.
That's what I was looking for. The only other thing, so you would argue that the inability to bargain, this, this is not a rush to get a new pay in place, say, in the next week, in the next month. This is something long-term that we're going to be looking at?
Yeah, the, in fact, it's just, in fact, the opposite. The primary concern, and I'm speaking for the committee here, so please, you know, cut me some slack in terms of interpretation. So it's my view, I'll own that. The, the committee's primary concern, and it's reflected in our recommendations, is we absolutely needed to deal with the issues of the initial educator. And, and, and I, I think it's fair to say, had we had in place all the things we've suggested, our T-shirt friend back here who spoke probably would not be leaving, because I don't, I think she's probably leaving money on the table. But in any event, you got to do what you got to do. The, I think the desire of the committee, it'll be up to the board to decide what to do, is that the board would move forward with that phase of the proposal because of the immediate concern that particularly teachers in their first five years, there is a tremendous vulnerability here in terms of losing people we don't want to lose. But doing it with a system of rules, as opposed to, well, I like you, so I'll give you more. It's not that. There's, there needs to be some rigor and some definition in the system so people know what to expect. Furthermore, the committee said, we're not ready to step forward with a recommendation on the next two levels. We've got some work we need to do, and we're committed to doing that work through the first semester of next year with the intent of having a recommendation in place for the board to consider on the next round of contracts or whenever it's time to put it into place. And so, and that work will happen, I would imagine, totally independent of anything that goes on in your bargaining process.
Okay, so you're arguing in not necessarily placement. As far as information, all the questions that are answered, is it possible to set up a website and a link with a question and answer? Because I think in your packet, you highlighted the lack of trust in administration. And I would argue, every question here, every listening session forward, you have a screen, you have the questions up there, either a document camera or something otherwise, bore us with the amount of information you give us, bore us with the amount of detail. Give us so much, because you know there are reasons for the mistrust. And I think if there were more people who trusted where we went, remember, the board made a decision on the recommendation of the superintendent to wipe away all that was old. We don't have to honor that. We don't have to pay them that. We don't have to do that. All those things were taken away on recommendation, and that's why we're here, and that's why we have people leaving. It's not just the pay, it's what's been removed. And I think the board needs to make a decision after Mr. Carlson leaves. Because educationally, what I call non-quantitative tangible things happen. People who've been in a bus for 20 years, people who've been in a classroom for three years, people who've been in a building for 30 years, regardless of what they do, you can't quantify what they do, but you can't replace it. And by saying that this is going to be a monetary issue, you're absolutely right. You're sitting on a mountain of back pay to pay people who are already gone because of what happened. People who are continuing to bring this district forward, you're right, it looks like all of a sudden this money is slipping out of your hands. But if you invest in people instead of buildings, and you say, I get that tangible thing that all these people bring, and they're worried, because this is their one chance, give them so many opportunities to move forward that we're like, yes, yes, we get it, just vote on this already. Give us every opportunity, and then recognize that the finances have to go here, but we're not running a bank and we're not running profit. We're educating. So at a certain point, the board's going to have to say, and we all have to do it too, we have to sell to the community that we offer something pretty awesome, and this is why we not only deserve, but we should be able to demand what we give because of the product we put forward. So ask the board, with all due diligence that you're putting in, take it slow, and regardless, trust the people who are going to be here for the next 10, 15, 20 years. We're not going anywhere, and we have a stake in this. You both know the hole we dug together. Moving forward, you have to be able to trust us. You have to be able to trust us, so hopefully you'll get us involved in the process. And I understand there's so many people worried because they're waiting for the other shoe to fall. They're waiting for the hammer of sustainability to hit them, saying, hey, can't have that. I think decisions have to be made with finances and without, and I hope, moving forward, we recognize that the budget is one of many, many things we're going to work with. But if you take us in honestly, most of us work for people with people we believe in, and that's why we're here, regardless of what you've lost or what we're going to gain. That's it. Thanks. Ms. Arques has a correct copy of the form. That is the same one.
Glenn, I'll also check with Brian about a website with a Q and A and ask him if that's a possibility.
Just for the record, that was from the 4/28 board packet. It was page 70?
It was 7D, Agenda Item 7D, like in dog.
From April 28th?
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Tiffany Reindl. I have a quick question for you on your, let's see, it's page 12. The summary of the proposed pay plan. On your second item, the accomplished professional educator, you list that a max, letter E, a maximum salary of an accomplished professional educator due to the length of service would be $49,105 with performance-based pay thereafter to maximum of $75,000. So given that you've, you've costed these out of what, what, what percent are you thinking of teachers will actually top out at the $75,000?
I have no idea.
Then how do you know if the district can afford it in the future?
Well, what most organizations do is, when they have a performance-based pay plan, they establish a budget of how much they can afford to distribute or are willing to distribute for performance-based pay. And I have no idea what number the board may lock in on in terms of that distribution.
So you're not, if every teacher did a superb job, chances are we wouldn't be able to afford to compensate them, according to this point?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
So if every teacher did an incredible job, we would not be able to adequately support this program? You're going to pit teacher against teacher for raises because there's a limited pot of money?
Well, your assumption is, is that every teacher will be determined to perform at the same level.
But you're not prepared to pay if they do? It's not sustainable?
No, I didn't say we weren't, that the board wasn't prepared to do it. That's the board's decision to make, how much they're prepared to fund performance-based pay. And we haven't finished levels two and three yet, so there hasn't been any discussion at the committee level as to what that package might look like.
Is it the board's intention to fully fund?
That would be a question for the board, not me.
Or will you make this competitive amongst teachers?
I can't answer that, according to my Roberts Rule secretary.
Then I will look forward to that discussion at the school board meeting.
Will you please repeat the question? You want to know if we plan to fully fund it or make it so that it is competitive?
Correct. If you are going to do, if you are going to choose to limit the pot of money that, based on performance-based pay, if you're limiting that pot, I want it to be clearly stated that you are making the choice to pit a teacher against a teacher because there will be a limited pot of money.
Well, let me try and answer to your question. If the pot is so big, of such, some size, and every teacher is deemed to be performing at the same level, then my assumption would be the pot would be distributed equally. Then, then they're not competing against each other. The competition ends up being, if a teacher is not performing at that high level, they don't get the same raise. I'll leave it to you to tell me whether you think all teachers perform at the same level. My experience is no. As a teacher, I suspect your experience in the classroom is neither do your students all perform at the same level, and you grade them differently.
I think when you have outside influences, and you do the best you can, and you achieve the results, there should be enough money to reward you for your success.
And I don't, I don't disagree with you at all. And I'm, I mean, I, along with everybody else, is very aware of the concerns that we have about being able to accurately measure teacher performance. Obviously, it's a state mandate. The committee was concerned about it enough to say, we're not prepared to step forward on levels two and three until we get a resolution of that issue. And we probably want a system that is less than the teacher effectiveness model that you're in the process of implementing.
Thank you. I do believe that when the board decides how well to fund the performance base versus base pay, it will speak volumes to their belief in their teaching staff. Thank you.
New topic, I'll keep this short. I spent some time on a board, I've spent some time in a classroom, and I've spent a lot of time observing. We have to be very careful. I think President Bill Clinton brought out the word parse. We all know how to parse now, it's on our spreadsheets. So one thing that's quite clear in this discussion, I think that everyone needs to be aware of, is the comment that no one will make less salary than they do now when you're sitting on a salary and benefit package. And so I know that probably is not the intent, but I hang out in this ephemeral space with guys with DD, and I don't mean Dungeons and Dragons, who like to talk about taking away health care. And as someone who was quite involved with trying to fill up what were benefits and salary given away or negotiated between through a pretty large referendum that no one ever really thought would pass, that was way too short, I am quite informed on the size of each of the stacks. And so one thing the board needs to be very clear of, as we look for this direction and then finally come into it, is what level of benefit are you going to at least try to preserve? Because realistically, based on that scenario, you could find a lot of money in the budget by just doing something, and I don't know what it's legal, what's legal, with taking away the benefit. So every time I hear the word parse of salary without benefit, I just tell you, it's something you need to be duly diligent about. Thank you.
All right, we have about 10 minutes left. Is there anyone else? Okay, in an absolute miracle, we are going to end this meeting 10 minutes ahead of schedule.
Thank you all.
They deserve a round of applause.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Angel, could you just tell anybody if they have come up with any other questions, that they can send them to the role that they did before?
Yep, please continue to send any questions. I assure you, as a board, we are genuinely interested in what you're thinking and what you're concerned about. you're concerned about. So you can send them to adaily@pointsschools.net.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I don't know, I don't read this stuff, so.
Any objection to adjournings?
All in favor?
Aye.
After this.
The world?
The world.
The world.